Guess when he bought the new one here.
Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The meeting I made at 7:00, 2015. At this time, I'm gonna ask you to stand for a moment of silent prayer. Okay, last, I'll turn to the flag, the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seated. The mission of the Portion Public Schools is to challenge the minds, challenge the bodies, and challenge the dreams of all students while focusing on excellence. At this time, I'm calling clerk, roll call please.
Reverend Fleming.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Mr. Nance.
Here.
Mr. Parent.
Present.
Reverend Patillo.
Present.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Present.
All members are present.
Okay, I call your attention to the agenda for approval. I'd like to make one change. I'd like to take the closed session and move that from being item number 12 to being item number 1A. They set the appeal process for the start at 5:30. So instead of us wanting to hold them up, we get the student out the way and get that done, then we will start our regular meeting. That would be the only change I'm asking for on the agenda.
Move for approval is amended.
Second.
Move to the proper second that we approve the agenda as amended in the discussion? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Yes.
Shenanigans.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Parent, would you take us in a closed meeting, please?
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting on the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes: consideration of student disciplinary matters as permitted under subsection A point two.
Okay, board's pleasure.
Second.
Move to the proper second that we go into closed meeting in the discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, roll.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Yes.
Shenanigans.
Okay, we're now in closed meeting. Move to the proper second that we come out of closed meeting, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford. Shenanigans.
Okay, Mr. Parent, would you take us back in the closed session for some other issues, please?
All right. I move that the board enter into closed meeting on the provision of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes: consideration of student disciplinary matters as permitted under subsection A point two and number two, consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection A point one. Second.
Move to the proper second that we go into closed meeting in the discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford. Shenanigans.
Okay, we're now back out in open session.
We're gonna let administration go. No need for them to hang around to see if they're gonna show up.
Six oh eight, Captain, we're out of closed meeting.
So now, when they...
Six oh eight, we're out.
...fit there. Guaranteed that they request...
We gave them, yeah, but it, writing, they didn't show up.
So we're just...
We're gonna vote?
Okay, right.
Votes do come.
We're gonna vote.
On your recommendation. Okay. Let them know they can come on the...
Mr. Bridgeford, did Mr. Parent make the motion?
Mr. Parent made the motion, Mr. Nance is second.
Thank you.
And we're shenanigans.
Thank you.
Didn't want to sneak, uh, down from MWE.
Yes.
What is out there, is he coming in? Now, we're gonna skip.
Yeah.
Okay, there she is.
There she is.
Oh, there you go. That's the motor.
I was gonna bring y'all some hot wings to bring that on.
Okay. All right, well...
Biggest three-star in the...
They do?
One way.
Okay, next item on the list is the MWE program update from Transformation Consultant from Brazil.
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna put you in oven, bake you for a little while, it's your turn.
Okay. First, can I start by thanking the board for giving your precious time and doing the afternoons with us to talk about the program and take a look at what we're doing and share some of your thoughts and ideas? That was extremely valuable, and I hope you found it valuable.
We just...
And again, I thank you for that opportunity. I think everybody received the report that was sent out, so rather than go back through it, I'll ask if there are any direct questions regarding anything in the report.
Hey, board members. It was sent out a couple of weeks ago. No questions?
Was it email or putting the board back?
It was email.
It was email. One of the things we attached to the report was the flow chart. Mr. Parent had said after coming to our session that what he thought would be valuable for the board were to see is that flow charts. I hope this is helpful, and I hope everybody's received it. And again, if you have questions, thoughts, or concerns, we'd love to hear what your thinking is. We're doing extremely well right now. We seem to have a very good flow going in terms of keeping in touch with our solicitations, being able to go through them in a comprehensive manner. Yesterday, we had the MWBE committee, and our two chairpersons from the board did an excellent job. We have to apologize that Dr. Whitaker's first MWBE committee meeting lasted two and a half hours. And we don't usually have that happen, but it was extremely thorough. And I think we should be very, very proud of the citizens who have taken the time to sit there, because they literally never, ever stopped asking questions and giving extremely good input. We have a new board member who was stopped in the middle of pouring his concrete to get to the meeting, so I think that that speaks volumes about citizens wanting to know what we're doing and being supportive. We appreciate Dr. Bracy, you took the time to come in and hear about what we were doing at their orientation, and I think that that was very helpful. One of the big events that we want to share with you, and hopefully you will see that flyer also, is on May 21st, we are doing the first Portsmouth Public School vendor fair. We're very excited about that. I'm hoping everybody's got a copy of that. We'll send more out, because we'd like to ask you to please spread the word about the vendor fair. It's gonna be at the Renaissance on May the 21st, and we're hoping to make sure that all of the MWBE vendors and others come and find out about doing business with Portsmouth Public Schools. We have lots of solicitations that are coming out. We want to make sure that we have given everybody an opportunity to bid and to solicit those opportunities. The city is also providing theirs. Sanska is one of our private industry companies that's coming in, the Port Authority is coming in. So we've got a great mix and opportunity for our vendors throughout our market area to come and see about some real-life contracts that are coming out, and an opportunity to take our numbers up, but also for Portsmouth Public School to be in the spotlight for taking the initiative to do something like this. So we're very excited. Quarterly report, does the board have an...
Not bad as part of the flyer or not, but we can make sure they get it.
Okay.
I think they got it a while back.
Okay, there'll be another quarterly report coming out, the first part of, well, end of June, actually.
Yeah, I think, or at the end of May.
Okay. So far, our figures look pretty good. We're still on an upswing in terms of being able to do a lot of subcontracting with MWBEs. And we're gonna push a little bit harder to see if we can get some more primes into the mix. We've had a couple of wonderful referrals from the school system, from the teachers, when after we started meeting with them back in December, and we said, "Please tell us what your needs are. Let us know exactly what we need to go and find for you in order to help you work with the program." And I'll let Bruce Williams tell you a little bit about that.
It isn't, I think, a week that's gonna go by that one of the either teachers or the office administrator or the financial person at one of the schools will call with a request on a particular item to help me, to have them help find a vendor for it. Churchland High School, they had some security cameras, and they were trying to find, to work their way through the small businesses, supply diversity website. Instead, I took a look at it from the point of view of security. Mr. Shepherd called me, and I took the advantage of finding a firm for them to be able to, you know, get a quote from. We found, for example, that they use Chick-fil-A quite a bit for some of the teams. Well, it turns out that Chick-fil-A on Fugly Boulevard is a minority-owned Chick-fil-A. It's a former colonel in the Marine Corps. We're trying to get him certified, but at least we identified that particular vendor. We have found vendors who can handle things like uniforms, but I think what's really important is that your staff is doing their best to try to find a way. And I consider that the utmost in due diligence, that they're asking for the help. And it's a challenge for me, but I go out to try to find it. I think I had, I think it was Churchland Middle was looking for sub sandwiches, and we were able to find the minority firm for them to do that. They weren't certified, but they were looking for those kind of things. Now, at the same time, we're out trying to find other vendors before the ask comes, and we've identified some in some areas like ring production and printing and transportation. And because we have the forecast now, we're out searching out firms who can have the opportunity to bid. Many of the firms that I talked to when they come over to Clark, and what we do is we do one-on-ones at Clark, which I want to thank Dr. Shepherd for. We had the issue where you're moving some folks over there to Clark, and so instead of being on the second floor, we're now on room six, thanks to Dr. Shepherd's help with me. And we've got quite a professional location for businesses to come into. And we interviewed one-on-one, I had a group that came in from Richmond the other day, who do both temporary services and they do transportation. And what we go through with them is what the policy is, what your intents are, and we also show them other ways to find our bids and find other people's bids as well. But I think the thing that they're surprised about is your seriousness about the program, and that they really do have a serious shot to bid with you, to do business with you. But again, the response from the schools has been gratifying. They've sent vendors that they work with over to me to get them certified, and we had several of them come in, and their certifications are in pending process right now. We have a lot of excited to be here on the 21st to find out what things we're gonna be approaching to offer. And again, we continue to provide for the vendors in your area, both in Portsmouth and beyond, the kind of stuff they haven't been used to seeing from any school system or any city, so...
And we're getting extremely positive feedback from all of the business community, not just MWBEs, but I've been at many chamber events recently, and people are looking at the school board as the leaders of the city. They're very excited about what you're doing and how things are being moved forward, so we want to share that with you. We will be working very closely with Chris on making sure that we have all of the end of the year projects under control. We'll do everything we can to make sure we get our MWBEs aware of what's out there into the process, and we will be working on that consistently until we have everything kind of buttoned down before we get into mid-June. Any questions?
Mr. Lamb, you had a, I saw your hand up earlier.
Just a couple of questions here. And I think, I mean, you've kind of talked about, you've alluded to it, you've kind of went in the direction of teachers and staff and so forth. I know it's been maybe about a month, month and a half ago, I think it was Ms. Duncan Hines that brought up the fact of, with regards to teachers and staff having difficulty going through the MWBE, you know, chart and the scales and so forth to try and find something. There was a question with regards to who's going through that? Is it all the way down to a teacher, or is it just administration? And I think you guys had said that you guys had put things in place to try to help that. Can you give us an update of the success of that?
Let's talk about the first part of your question. I think Chris can answer that, because that's really a good question.
If you're talking about the things that we've helped them, one of the things we've done is we've given them a list of vendors that are currently certified as MWBEs in what is our market survey area, our MSA. And those are the ones that are local that we're trying to encourage utilization of those vendors. So in a lot of cases, bookkeepers or schools weren't aware that, you know, a mile away was somebody that was certified that could do that type of thing. So they were looking for a quick reference list for the things that they commonly buy and have a list of those vendors that can do those things. So we provided that. That's in addition to, as Ms. Brazil indicated, we did have that full training session at the end of the year, which went over a lot of their concerns, answered a lot of their questions on how to do things, offered a referral service to Bruce and purchasing to quickly answer questions. Again, as Bruce indicated, sometimes the website at SBSD is a little daunting. You have to understand what keywords to use to pull up the right vendors for a particular commodity. So sometimes somebody may go in, not quite have the right keyword, and they'll get frustrated that, "Oh, I didn't see anything." So sometimes a little help with that. And once they've identified several vendors, then they know who to routinely go with and find those things. So some of it is just getting up on the learning curve on knowing, you know, where to go, and once they're there, we think it'll be a lot smoother.
And that's where Bruce comes in also, because if a teacher or principal or whoever's doing the buying gets to a point that they don't understand what codes to buy, all they need to do is call him, and he will take them through the codes, not only the ones that the state allows you to put in as a business, but he can help them think through, "What is it you really need?" And so then we have the ability to go to the other codes. We can't change any codes, because that's the state. But that's why we're using Bruce, because if you get an NIGP code that says you're a welder, well, it may just be a welder, but that may not be everything your business does. But we can go in and we can determine if there are other services that that welding quote company can provide, and then he can put in the NIC codes for them.
I took it upon myself to spend some time with Dr. Bechtall over at Churchland, because she had a lot of vendors, a lot of buyers and things, and we're running into some issues. And so I spent about an hour with her going over how they can utilize my services to help them cut the time down, reduce it. One of the things we suggested to do, which several of the schools have done, is a lot of the teachers are very experienced, they're professionals, and so they have an idea of what they want to buy. So the object is to send them a list, and then we'll go pick through the list to find vendors for you. We were successful in doing that to the company in Hampton, world-class marketing. We were able to connect them to those things that they normally buy. Some we haven't been able to find, still trying to find those prescription glasses from a Portsmouth provider that hasn't, and we haven't been able to find that yet, but we have been unsuccessful. But the key is that they don't get frustrated to the point where it impedes their productivity, they call me and let me hassle out the frustration. Because once they've made the call, I know down what they're looking for. They have done due diligence, from our point of view, because then it's up to us to find the vendors. And sometimes they may show up when they need them, sometimes they may not. But what it does do, on the flip side, it's like Brighton High School referred a gentleman to me who does photograph, photography, turns out he does class rings. And so we're finding that some folks who are classified one way in the database do other stuff. And we wouldn't know that unless the school referred it to us or we were looking for it. And so it's been a two-way street to try to take that logjam out of the picture.
And my second question, you had brought this up, and now that you've kind of mentioned this, I'm kind of curious, you know. With regards to, I mean, you had even mentioned Chick-fil-A.
Yes.
The local...
Owner.
Owner. So this would qualify under MWBE?
Absolutely.
So I guess when I come, when I'm thinking about this now, my understanding of the whole MWBE was procurement, and I was thinking more along the lines of contracts of, say, roofs or, you know, things of this nature, Chick-fil-A, I'm kind of thinking that's more like a teacher wanting to order food for their class or so. So how extensive does this, say, if a teacher wants to do something as simple as copy or, well, order chicken for their classroom or Chick-fil-A, does that mean that they're utilizing this as...
Let me tell you a little bit more about the...
As well, or...
Yeah, I mean, it covers that, it's catering services. But I want to be clear that it's not all Chick-fil-A, because there's franchisees.
Right.
And the way vendors get certified is by their tax ID. So you could have Chick-fil-A's with different tax IDs, some of them are MWBEs and some of them aren't.
Right, I guess what I'm looking at, my question is that even for an administrator or a teacher, for even something like that, that their mindset is to go through or looking at MWBE vendors?
It's to look for opportunities that may be for an MWBE. There may be six Chick-fil-A's in the area. If you decide you want to do business only with one Chick-fil-A, and we share with you that there are three MWBEs that can provide the same service, what we're looking for is for you to rotate that at some point in time, and that's part of your policy.
I think the answer to your question, Mr. Lamb, is this, because I got a call for 400 hot dogs, for example, by one of the school, one of the middle schools, and that's 400 hot dogs. It's, in many of the cases, those small purchases mean a lot for small businesses within the city of Portsmouth and other places. That may be a deal for them to begin the process of applying. So the issue is to give an opportunity. That's really what it's all about. And this is so that this opportunity doesn't take up a lot of staff time to do, is why they call me, to do, and I'll hunt them down. Now, what that does is expands the pool of people to respond to what they might need, even if it's a hot dogs or a hamburger, but it'd be a surprise how much you spend. I think we had $600,000 in milk last year.
Exactly.
That's a lot of money, it's a lot of milk. And so, in essence, although it may seem mundane, those pennies and nickels, they add up, and they mean a lot to local small businesses.
No, and that wasn't meaning mundane, I was even just talking about, say, the teacher wanted to award their classroom at the end of the year, so we're only talking 30 kids. So...
Well, it turns out, if they were wanting for food, that's, in most cases, that's not gonna be a problem. But in the case of, let's say you got 100 or 200 that you're gonna do something with, we need to give that opportunity a wider reach.
Because one of the things that we've been able to do this year, we've not been able to do before, is count the activity fund money in the MWBE program. When we first started the program, you did not have a financial system that would allow us to look at activity funds and see how people were spending money. You do have that system in place now. So the plus factor was to the schools that they can take any activity funding money that they've got, and they can apply that towards the goals of the program. And that makes life a lot easier for them, because they're basically those small purchases. But we've talked about the fact that most MWBE companies are not companies that have 25 to 50 employees. They have five to 10, that's the average. Most of them are making under $500,000 a year, and that's why they're called small. So those are the companies that we're trying to target to keep them in business, so they are the ones who are able to employ students. They're the ones who can create a couple of jobs, maybe not 6,000 jobs. And that's how your economic engine begins to grow, because you have more and more people employed, and then they can expand. The things we do know from our research is that when you have a successful MWBE program and you have people who are participating, the first thing a small business does is employ more people. The minute they get a contract, that's the first thing they're gonna do, because then they need that labor in order to fill those contracts, so you have more employment going on. But what I did want to share, because I want to clarify what the categories are, and because you thought the only thing this was was construction, but...
I know, I thought it was big items.
The program is designed to address all purchases, big and small. So when we talk about the goals that you've got, you have construction services, okay? You have construction services for subcontractors, professional services, non-professional services, goods and supplies, and then you have procurement, P卡 transfers. So anything that falls within any of those categories, you're looking to see if your MWBE program can satisfy the needs. Basically, what you have is a subcontractor's program. We don't have big prime companies that are MWBE companies within our geographical market area. We do have smaller companies who can get a piece of a contract, or they can partner with a larger company to take on a job and become a sub for them. So that's really what your program is doing.
Using your example, Joe Jack's Restaurant is a woman-owned restaurant, and I remember Joe Jack's, I interviewed that business when he did the initial disparity study. Very nice lady, by the way, owns two locations, one in Newport News and one in Churchland. Great restaurant, by the way. Well, they came up as one of the ones that Churchland High School uses. And the only thing, the barrier was they hadn't gotten certified. So when I called it, you know, I said, "Could you mind getting certified?" But it's a woman-owned business, and so that, they may, 10 teachers may order on a various times during the year something for their classroom. But Joe Jack's is gonna benefit from that by being identified as one of the possible vendors that fits your program. That's the kind of stuff that makes a difference in a community like ours.
And that whole concept of rotation is really critical to understand. Most of the time, when you see purchasing going on at the federal and state level, there's a rotation program in place somewhere, so that those who have the purchasing power, which is your staff, your teachers, your principals, are not going to the same vendor repeatedly, 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 because that's my best friend, and why shouldn't I throw the business to my best friend? Or that's who I like versus someone else, so I'm gonna throw the business to the person I like. That's discriminatory. What your program says is that everybody who can supply the goods or services has a fair opportunity to supply that good and services. It's called competition. What the program does is it stops those who only choose to use people they like or that don't like them. That's the only thing the program does. It says, "Open the door to everybody equally and be fair."
Ms. Williams.
And we try to assist everybody in the school system to live up to that, because that's what you said as a board, you wanted.
Ms. Williams, and then Reverend Patillo.
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. I was going back to, going back to the initial disparity study that was done, and these actions and this program is put in place as a result of that. And what the survey, and I'm not sure if you were on the board when...
No.
No, I wasn't.
Okay. Well, what the survey, the study showed was egregious discrimination. It was less than certain percentage minority businesses being able to get this. So with the consultants and Ms. Brazil and Transformation, they set up the program, and they are experts at it, and the program, the consultants, the attorneys they bought in, it whiffed through the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals. So they have been with us, walking us through this, telling us what we can and cannot do, and these, I believe, are aspirational goals.
Yes.
Because that's all we can do at this point. And so, so the things that they're trying to get done is to help us reach these goals, the aspirational goals. They're not quotas, they're not that, because that's illegal, but they're aspirational goals.
And I understand, and I know you've brought up the...
And these actions and this program is put in place as a result of that. And what the survey, and I'm not sure if you were on the board when.
No.
No, I wasn't.
Okay. Well, what the survey, the study showed was egregious discrimination. It was less than certain percentage minority businesses being able to get this. So with the consultants and Ms. Brazil and Transformation, they set up the program and they are experts at it. And the program, the consultants, the attorneys they bought in, it whiffed to it, the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals. So they have been with us, walking us through this, telling us what we can and cannot do. And these, I believe, are aspirational goals.
Yes.
Because that's all we can do at this point. And so, so the things that they're trying to get done is to help us reach these goals, the aspirational goals. They're not quotas, they're not that because that's illegal, but they're aspirational goals.
And I understand, and I know you've brought up the aspir- or the, the study.
Yeah.
And so for that, I was just thinking, again, you know, how far this goes down and she brought up Chick-fil-A. It was just, you know.
Chick-fil-A is a big business.
It's a big business.
We don't think of it as, we don't.
My whole point was, my whole point was, was, and we do this all the time at school too. If I'm a teacher and it's the end of the year and I want to reward someone for whatever or so forth, you know, do, do I have to go through this right here?
You're, you're really not talking about small purchase when you talk at that level. You're almost talking micro-small.
It does, my point.
So at that, at that level, that, all they need to do is go get what they've always done. The policy says that, that under $500.
Right.
We don't even look at it. We don't even look at it. And I wouldn't think a school teacher providing sandwiches would spend $500. If they do, I want to be in that class when they eat.
Right. So yeah, that's what I understood as it was under $500.
Let's clarify that.
Rem Patillo?
That there are policies.
And, okay. Rem Patillo, then Dr. Whitaker.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Brazil, first for meeting with me after then.
I appreciate your time.
I appreciate it. And I agree with the program. It was needed long before it came to Portion Public Schools. My question is pretty much on process, like procurement process. Is there a manual that our, I guess, purchasing agents have as a step-by-step process?
Well, you have SOPs.
Well, yeah, there are SOPs. That's one of the things that we wanted to improve on because we do have MWBE policies. We do have some purchasing policies that we've gotten into sync finally because for a while they were not in sync. And then we have some kind of desk guide procedures on a couple of different issues. And one of them was small purchasing procedures that was reviewed by the MWBE advisory last year and approved. And, and so all these things, we're kind of adding on to help end users have, it's not right now one succinct desk guide form. That's where we want to go. But we do, we are putting together these procedures.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I, I hear a lot of, a lot of the concern is that the purchasing process may be a bit longer than normal. But, but if I'm not mistaken, I mean, you told me in our session that you have a vendor, a vendor guide or?
Yes.
And then they have access to that also?
Oh, yeah. They, they demanded that. And so we, we actually developed it for them, which was one of the great things that came out of our, having the December time to really get with the schools and ask the question, what do you need? What can we help you with? And that was the answer. Give us what, what they call cheat sheets. We don't call them that. We call them vendor guides for the record. And it gives them all of those companies that they like doing business with, as well as the other companies that they can go to for the, for the same kind of needs that Mr. Lamb is talking about, the smaller things that they like to buy. You know, if it's lollipops, here are people who sell lollipops. Again, if it's under, it's under that $500 spend amount, we don't even see that. We're not interested in even looking at that. So it's not an impediment in terms of, of time, as, as I shared with you. The school system, like every government system, is still under the Virginia Procurement Act.
Right.
You can't change that, I can't change. I sat on the committee with the governor this summer. We changed two things after 19 meetings, okay? It's a terrible thing to try to change because there's so many pieces to it and it dovetails into other manuals and everything else. So it's a monster to live with. Thank God Chris is living with it and I'm not. But when we talk about following procurement policy, that is the first policy you follow no matter what kind of programs in place. Because if you don't, you're violating the Virginia procurement law. Well, we're not going to do that because we don't like newspaper articles.
Right.
Like some other people. Then you have what has been passed by this board, what we call the MWBE policy. It really is not difficult to understand. It says if you, well, we went over it. If you hit a certain dollar amount, these are the number of bids you get, quotes you get before you purchase. That's really all it says is, you know, within a certain dollar amount, make sure that you've tried to include everybody who can do the work.
Right. I'm wondering if it's just some kind of additional training that's needed on a school level or, I'm thinking maybe on where to find the vendor guide, if it's online or if it's.
Well, I think one of the things we talked about, maybe in January, I'm not sure, Chris, was that we would do continuous work with the schools.
Refresh your training.
And refresh your training. And also that's one of the things that Bruce is doing now. If a school really is having an issue, if they really don't know how to find what they need, he will go in and so will the purchasing staff. Because it's not a separate program from purchasing.
Right.
Where we're going and maybe what your teachers are having a problem with is not the MBE program, it's the state program. It's the fact that the state has not stepped up and put those codes in and changed them the way we had hoped they would. And we had a wonderful response from them this afternoon, didn't we, about how busy they are and you're not a big enough municipality to care about what you need. So we'll deal with that in the morning.
There were, there were also some frustrations at the state level because one of the things we rely on is the, the online web tool. It used to be with the Virginia Department of Minority Business Enterprises. Well, this past year, that merged into the Department of Commerce and they changed their name and everything else. And for a while, their website was down, which everybody was using. So there, there were some frustrations we had to deal with.
But those are not the program. That is your state. That is your governor, okay? And so the more they hear from you, the better they'll get at their job.
Right. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I thank you for being here and I agree with what you said when you mentioned that this is a form of economic development for small businesses. I had a question about the rotation. Once a company has been awarded a bid for a service, that's kind of a continuous service like transportation or supplying food, at what point do we rebid that particular service?
Renew.
For a continuing service, typically you'll have a contract for whatever the contract term is. And the contract term, I think generally is a year. Sometimes it's longer than a year. Sometimes it's longer than a year with options for, you know, renewing. So it, it will depend on the service. Sometimes it's longer than a year for a couple of things is you want to get and leverage an economical price. And getting a longer contract with a vendor where he can amortize his costs over a longer period, sometimes you can get those. So there's some business decisions on, you know, how long you're going to review it. One of the things the school board adopted is, is a change to the MWBE and purchasing policy that renewals would be looked at by, by the school board that are over 50,000. So, so now where in the past, a renewal might have been kind of perfunctory and, and you just renewed if the vendor was performing okay or better. Now it's a little, little closer scrutiny, which is a good thing too, because not only do you have to look at whether they're doing a good job, but are there other opportunities, other vendors out there that might have changed the marketplace to make it better to renew again? So those are the things.
Because I, I just want, that's something I'm concerned about. Mr. Nance and I attended the meeting yesterday and you have some vendors on here that are getting very large amounts of money. And I want to make sure that as a board, we're reviewing these to see how long they've had these contracts, how they're performing and if they need to be renewed, rebid it out so that other companies may have a chance to be awarded those contracts.
Mr. Byron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mrs. Brazil.
Thank you, sir.
For the flow chart because I think that that really does simplify for the person the step one and when you get to step six, you got five days with it, with then to respond.
Exactly.
So this, thank you. The other thing is that you keep, you keep using the, the term teachers. Are we talking mostly secondary teachers? Because I know that when a teacher needs something for the classroom, they would go to the principal.
Right.
And it would be up to the principal to make sure that the order was made. But y'all have used the term a lot tonight about teachers. I didn't, I think teachers ordered, they, they ordered things. I mean, I, as a teacher, I would say, principal, I need this because the budgets go to the principals and they're the ones that control the budget, not the individual classroom teachers. So I just needed that cleared up a little bit.
I think probably Chris can explain that because you're, you're absolutely right. We're using that term. We need authority to buy anything. And if they're complaining about something, then we'd like to know what it is because it isn't at that level that purchasing should be taken away.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to declare, clarify.
So we need to make sure that when we're getting those kind of comments, we understand who's issuing those comments. No, unless something's changed, Chris, I'm, I'm not aware of any.
A teacher doesn't.
I mean, well, every school, I think, is different from what I've seen as far as the level of control that the principal will, you know, ask either the bookkeeper to control or the principal has very, their thumb on everything that's being bought. Or in a lot of cases, you know, department heads or individual teachers, like, you know, the art teacher puts together an order, you know, and then it goes through, you know, the bookkeeper or something else. So it depends and some teachers do get involved in.
But the principals are the ones that have been trained. They're the ones that have been trained. If something.
And, and the bookkeepers.
And the bookkeepers. So if there's.
So the teachers don't have the funds. They, they may make decisions on what they want to order, but they don't have the authority to.
Exactly.
They don't have, they don't have the funds.
Thank you for that clarification.
No, I just wanted to declare that because I.
And, and that's who we're basically working through. You know, if you've got a, a system in place, you have to work with that system.
Right. Exactly.
If there's a teacher, an individual teacher that needs something, then we would prefer that coming through the principal or the bookkeeper.
Right.
And then Mr. Williams can go out and help provide that.
Right.
But we don't want to circumvent the system because then we could have chaos on our hands.
Because I can see through the student activity funds.
Yes.
You know, that's a lot of money there.
It's a lot of money.
So.
Yeah. And I tell you, when we did the disparity study, because we couldn't count that money at that time because there was no system.
Right.
When we did get a chance to count it, we're talking millions and millions of dollars. We're not talking little amounts of money.
Right.
So it has to be monitored. It has to be controlled because that could be a black eye real easy.
Sure. Thanks for clearing that up.
Okay. I'm proud to say that tomorrow, no, not next week, next Thursday, I think will be my 13th session with the Boys to Men, Now Girls to Women program at IC Norcom. The program has grown. I think as a result of the field study we did over at the executive decision session in December. And they're doing a great job over at the, at the Elizabeth River that they're doing. They've done a great job. They did a GPS study over there. And so I'm proud to be able to be part of that program. And you got a group of young people, young, that are trying to make themselves really, make you proud of them as Portion Public School students.
I, I do want to give a kudos to Chris before we end though, because yesterday's meeting, we were able to supply the MWBE advisory committee and the chairs of the board with some information we've been trying to do for two years now. And we finally have a list of all of the vendors who you are paying $100,000 or more for services. And that was very needed so we could get a handle on who's making money. There are a couple in here who are making millions of dollars off of you. We're going to be looking very closely at who they are, what services you're purchasing and what opportunities lie within them. So we thank you for getting those munis systems. You know, Dr. Bridgeford, that we have had a long.
I haven't even adopted.
But you have the wisdom of one.
Thank you.
And you, you know that the data system and capturing this information.
I know where we started.
Yes, we know where we started. So we, we've made some awfully big strides in the last couple of weeks.
Mr. Nance?
And Bruce alluded to the program at Norcom. I just want everyone to know that when we went into final negotiations with Transformation, Dr. Mark Whitaker and myself said that, you know, we have a majority minority district, division rather, and we, we need to grow the entrepreneurship. And we had a student component put in as well as reducing the cost of the contract at the same time. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
We, we hope to be able to bring in some funds to the school board. We're not going to talk about that tonight, but we are hoping to bring in some funds to expand that youth, youth program because the kids are hungry for entrepreneurial guidance. And I think we have some companies in town who are willing to work with them and do some things. So we, hopefully we'll have a nice surprise for you in September.
Let me put this big plug in. The biggest problem we have there is transportation. I mean, that is really the biggest problem. They're willing to go, we can find opportunities for them to get to. But I got to tell you, transportation is the biggest part because we did have a situation where we were going to take them to Richmond for the, to do the general assembly, but we didn't plan to pick them up from here, from IC Norcom, take them to where the bus was going to be, the 200-plus men was paying for. We left it to the parents to get them there. We will not do that again.
No.
Okay? But we need to let you know that sometimes the only barrier is getting them from point A to point B.
Just looking at this list.
Yes.
I'm kind of confused as to why, I mean, I'm not going to, but Virginia Beach Public Schools and Suffolk Public Schools.
Yeah.
I understand, I, I think I understand Norfolk, but I don't understand Virginia Beach Public Schools and Suffolk.
Tuition for some.
Oh, is that what it is?
I believe it is.
Yeah, and I think there's a big one for Norfolk which covers the C-Sup program.
Yeah, I know that one, but Virginia Beach.
Virginia Beach Public Schools.
Well, Virginia Beach Public Schools.
Yeah. I think it is a shared, some student services that we're sharing. I'd have to get the specifics.
And take a look.
That just kind of stood out.
Yes, it did.
Oh, it's an eye-opener, no question about that.
Well, that's what we were looking at yesterday. We're going to look at some of those things very, very closely.
And Mr. Steele has the copy.
Especially the air reservation.
The rest of us get a copy.
Yes, Mr. Steele has the copy and will circulate it along with the news report.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's going to generate some discussion.
I'm sure.
We thank you. Thank you very much.
That's my pleasure.
Okay, item number three, self, self-insurance update. And I hope I do not murder this name. Mrs. Corey Dela Giacano.
Thank you.
Hey, I do it up here. Michael, are you at the table also or?
Well, I can, sister. Well, I'll be fine back here. She's doing all the talking tonight.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Corey Dela Giacano with USI Insurance Services. And I know you're used to seeing Terry Yates here usually presenting. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to attend this evening. Her daughter is getting married this weekend, so we're letting her do those fun and exciting events. So I wanted to go through the exhibits with you that you had all been presented regarding how we're looking with the move to self-insurance for 2015. I'm going to walk through the exhibits comparing your paid claims to your budget rates. The first column is just where we track what month we're in for the plan year, the number of employees enrolled during that month. We have the paid claims net of SSL. SSL is your specific stop loss. We set $150,000 specific stop loss per member per year. So that's your reinsurance. That's your protection against claims. So we have the paid, paid claims net of your specific stop loss, your retention expenses, which includes your reinsurance and your admin fees that you pay to Optima. Then we add those two together to get your expenses, and we compare that next to your budget rates. So this is looking at it on a monthly basis in that first section. The next section looks at those same columns, but on a cumulative. So we do the rolling. I'm going to compare the total claims plus retention on the cumulative plus the budget rates on the cumulative. Right now, when we compare those two numbers, budget rates are set at $3 million. That's what you paid to Optima. Your total claims and retentions and retention expenses are coming in at 2.4. So you are under budget by over half a million dollars. So that's good.
Good thing.
That's a wonderful-
End of March, though.
Exactly. We're only three months into it.
Three months in.
I was going to say, don't get happy.
Don't get happy yet.
Well, that's a good point. Now, what I want to point out to you, too, you'll notice under the paid claims net of specific stop loss on a monthly basis, when we're looking at where they started in January to where they are today in March, from the 369 to the over 1 million.
Mm-hmm.
We expect them to be at the 1 million level going forward. The March is a more true number of where your claims would be. There is a lag that comes in with your paid claims. So all claims that were incurred prior to January 1st are paid under your fully insured contract that you ended on December 31st. So that's why there's that little bit of a slump. But now with March, they're tracking more to where they should be. Okay? Any questions on that one? Then we put it into some chart format for you as well on page two. This is just showing you your total claims plus retention compared to your budget. That's on a monthly basis. And then the next chart shows it on a cumulative basis. In addition to the specific stop loss that you have on a per-member basis, you also have maximum liability. So that's added protection against claims. So your maximum liability is if your actual claims exceeded 20% of where Optima projected your expected liability to be at. So if we were 20% higher on your claims alone, this is where maximum liability would start to kick in, your aggregate insurance. So we have the same charts on the very first part with your actual paid claims, your retention expenses, all tracking on a monthly basis. And then in the red box, we have this comparing to your maximum liability on a cumulative basis. So what I'm comparing here is your maximum liability column compared to the actual claims that were paid. So comparing the 3 million to the 2.086. And with looking at maximum liability, you're almost $1 million under maximum liability.
As of March.
As of March. As of March. And we will send this monthly report to finance. So they will have this report to see how we are looking on every month.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
So far, so good.
Mr. Lamb, didn't his wheels-
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, when I saw this, I was like, whoo. Because I know there was a lot of discussion and so forth when we were looking at this, the positives and negatives and weighing. And we were hoping that this is the direction we'd go. My question is, you know, there's, I guess there is a tendency that people in general get sick in that January, February, March, many times, usually, just because of cold and so forth. Of course, this year has been very interesting because of the change in weather and all of that stuff that goes along with it. So there's no, there's no magic ball. I mean, there's no way of predicting anything. But I get, looking at this and based upon whatever studies or models that you have, is it safe to say that the expenses that we see, that this is probably going to be that January, February, March, is this going to be probably the largest chunk that we would see in the year?
So you're asking if that this is where we're going to see most expenses, and then it's going to trickle down as far as your-
Trickle down or level out?
Level out, yes. I would say that your claims will probably start to level out weeks, based on the projection for the entire 12 months. On a monthly basis, that projection was at 1.5 million. So that's where we would expect your total claims to be, at 1.5 million. So coming in at the 1.1, you're 30% under budget as of March. And that's about where we think, expect your claims to be on a monthly basis. So January and February are probably the lowest you will ever see it.
Right.
Not the opposite. But it should level off at this point and be around that 1 million range.
1 million, 1.1, whereas our maximum coverage or liability is at the 3.
That's what you've paid thus far.
Right.
So that's compared-
Your maximum.
Right, compared to your maximum liability. And I do want to clarify, your maximum liability is strictly on claims.
Correct.
That does not include your retention expenses for reinsurance and administrative fees.
Okay.
Yeah, those first three months, the first two months, when you start a new contract, it takes a while for the providers to start filing the claims, for people to start using it. So you see this, hopefully. We don't want to see that. We want to see leveling off. So your first two months are probably going to be your lowest, in January and February. And then we should be seeing, as Cory said, the 1.5. Was it 1.5?
1.5.
But right now, we're, that third month, the next month is going to be key. What we see in April and May.
Right.
That's the level. We'll see, hopefully, it's lower than the 1.5. But we'll have that, those figures-
You should have that within the next week.
That will give us a true indication.
Okay.
Mr. Nance?
Plus, in the summer, in school divisions, you have more procedures as well, people putting procedures off. So you may notice your July, August being higher than the normal.
Yep.
That's quite possible, absolutely.
But that would really come in August, September, because it trails about-
Well, I'm just saying.
And that was my question. Does it normally trail about 60 to 90 days behind?
That's good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you're exactly right. That's exactly right. There's about a 60 to 90 day lag.
So we'll see that in September, October.
Yes.
Right. But I'm just saying, there's going to be a rise. There may be. Those procedures are generally done, you know, during the summer.
Yep.
Maybe.
It's about a 30-day lag for pharmacy.
Right.
Mr. Parent, Dr. Whitaker.
I just had a, I mean, I'm not a health insurance expert, but in the worst-case scenario, what happens if you go over the maximum liability?
That's where you have aggregate insurance, aggregate stop-loss insurance. So that is your protection, that if you were to go 20% over, they would then come in and pick up the remainder of the claims.
And that aggregate insurance, what is that exactly?
Your aggregate insurance is the protection that if your max, your actual claims were to exceed the projection by 20%, and just on the claims alone, that would not include your reinsurance or your admin fees. So that would be those claims, like if you looked at your paid claims of 2.086, if at the end of the year, that was 20% higher than where we had projected or where Optima had projected that to be, then that's where your aggregate insurance would come in. And they call it aggregate because it picks it up on the whole group.
Okay.
Where your specific stop loss just picks it up on a per individual.
Okay.
Good question. Does, I think I know the answer to this. Does Optima provide at the end of each month the number of claims? I mean, can that, can you get that information or do they release that information so that, as Mr. Lamb, you're looking into a crystal ball. You can't possibly know what's going to happen to an individual. So that you're looking at, on a month-by-month basis, the number of claims so that you begin to give us more projection that-
We receive monthly statements of total paid claims.
Okay.
So what the school paid for the members.
Right.
And we receive the amount of the enrollment. And we also track high-cost claimants that are at about 50% of the specific stop loss. So that would be $75,000. So we know any kind, anything that might be forthcoming.
Okay.
So we are looking at those very large claimants that could, those are the ones that do impact the claims.
Right.
There's one more question about the aggregate insurance. Is that at a higher rate than this insurance? So is that more expensive if you go over the, your liability?
For a renewal, it probably would be. But actually, your aggregate insurance is generally very low compared to your specific stop-loss insurance.
Okay.
Question. In three months, we'll have, no, not three months, probably four or five months, we'll have six months worth of information accumulated. Would you be able to look at that and-
Give you a better indication?
Yeah.
That works? Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Definitely. We'll have our underwriters take a look at it and be able to project forward what it should end up, what it should stand. Oh, yeah, no question. This is very immature data that we have, but we still wanted to show it to you right now. But give us-
We all took a good start, but we knew that was going to happen.
Yeah, we did.
But, you know.
It didn't have to happen. It didn't have to.
But I don't want the excitement to be there. If we have six months, we clam and-
Exactly.
And all I'll say was even larger because-
That's correct.
It mean we came in at the right time for them because we still had to wait for the snowfall.
Yep, that's exactly right.
That's right. That's why I wanted to ask about claims because, I mean, we can feel good right now for just a few minutes.
Mm-hmm.
We got to go down, we got to go all the way to the end of the year.
Yeah, we're climbing that mountain right now.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, next item is number four, request for approval of changes in payroll pay dates effective July 1st, 2015. Dr. Bracy?
Brittany is going to present that information.
Okay, Brittany's going to present. Okay.
Within your board packet, you have the executive summary that outlines the recommendation for this payroll payday change along with the schedule. Just kind of going back through just to give some, a refresher on this. When I came into the department or the school system, I noticed that we were processing payroll two business days instead of seven business days. So because of the short turnaround time, we didn't, we don't have time to kind of react if anything unexpected occurs. Also, we have approximately 15K of overtime that we incur every year because we're trying to process payroll within a short amount of time. And we also have our payroll department and IT city personnel working on holidays that everyone else has off, which that's incurred costs. So in order to put time back into the processing time to, you know, kind of hedge any risk that could be out there and eliminate this overtime cost, the recommendation was to change the timing of processing payroll from two business days to seven business days. And in order to do that, it would mean we would need to move the payday, the bi-weekly payroll pay dates back one week. Now, with doing that, we were looking at it being effective 7/1, 2015. And we had walked through the effect it would have on each employee class. From that, we said for 12-month hourly employees, the first payroll period in July, we would need to get on this new payroll schedule. So to do that, we would need to pay that class of people five days on July 3rd, five days on July 17th, and then 10 days on the next payroll schedule. And then it would continue one- and two-week intervals. For everyone else, it would be just moving the payroll pay dates back one week once they start. Because of this change, we said, well, we would need to communicate it. So we've outlined a plan to communicate to 12-month hourly employees with supervisors and 10-month employees with supervisors to sit down and talk with them about this so they can ask questions. And also, for 12-month employees a salary who don't get overtime, we were just going to send out a staff email, but leave the door open for them to ask any questions that they had.
Mr. Lamb?
Let me see if I, if I understand correctly. Because of the changeover of what would occur, so in July, are you saying that during a, the pay period, a two-week pay period, there's going to be some times here where some people will be paid five days during that two-week period?
No, this is, that will just happen one time because you have to get on the new two-week schedule. So in order to do that, we didn't want to push, and this only affects the 12-month hourly employees, that one-time switch over. We didn't want to say you have to wake a week to get all of your pay. So we're saying, we're going to pay you a week early and then get on a new schedule, which will be a week later. And pushing back the pay dates a week later gives that seven business days to process payroll. It does not change the amount of pay that anyone across the division makes within a month. It just changes the actual date they get paid.
I'm in full agreement with this. Understand, we've talked about it in finance. The only thing that I ask is that we communicate, communicate, and communicate.
Agreed.
And I know that at a faculty meeting, you'll have teachers that will raise their hand, and they will be concerned when, once we have the board approved this, that the principals are the ones that are going to have to understand and be able to explain. Because when you say supervisor, I'm assuming that supervisor means like department head. I mean, I like principals of the high, of the schools, of all schools, they would have to be very knowledgeable. Are you going to each school and present this? Because if we're, this is not communicated clearly, you're going to have some employees that are going to be upset. And they, and, you know, because they're going to have to change their online, how they pay their bills and so forth. It's a good thing, but the bottom line is that we need to make sure we communicate this very clearly early so they know when the change happens, they're not going to be upset. That's all.
Yes, that's-
That was my concern from the beginning. It still is.
Yes, that's our plan. I've already sat down with the payroll supervisor to map out how we can get to all the locations, all the people, and get this communicated, and they can ask questions. We also already talked with Gil Pittman. So she understands, you know, what this move is. Because we wanted to hear concerns from her because she works with, you know, a lot of our employees one-on-one. So I made sure to get concerns and hear from her so I can make sure that, because I may not know something, she can tell me something, I can react to it or see how that, how this may affect that. But she said the same thing. You just got to communicate it.
And, and, you know, the examples, you know, John Doe, you can give some examples so that they actually visually see how this is going to impact. Because that's the first thing that a person's going to say, how does this, I know when the money goes into my checking account, I have certain bills due at certain times. That's what, that's the human need. That's what they want to know, how that's going to impact, so.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why we want to communicate this as soon as possible.
Right.
We're waiting for, you know, for it to go on the board, and then we can hit the ground running. Because we got to give people time if they do need to change a date, something comes out.
Right.
We do realize that.
Reverend Matillo, and then Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's clear, this information leaves this room, that no one's getting paid any less money.
Any less or more.
And they're actually getting paid a week early when they get paid for that one week, just so we can adjust the schedule right.
The 12-month hourly employees only, yes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
You had mentioned that based upon the current system that we have, that we're having to pay out $15,000 in overtime to. Have you done the models with regards to how much money, cost savings there's going to be by switching over to this newer model?
It's approximately the $15,000 because it's going to take out the overtime from payroll department and them coming in on a holiday and working, you know, X amount of hours. So it takes all that, that payroll cost out of our budget.
And this isn't going to affect, this isn't going to change or affect bus drivers anymore as well off of these? Because I know there's a switch in the summer.
The only effect on employees is that their pay date is a week later. But within, within each month, they're still getting the same pay for the same number of work days that they worked versus, as they would on the old schedule, or the current one, I should say.
Okay. Voice pleasure?
May for approval.
Second.
Would you like a second that we adopt the change for the approval for the changes in payroll pay dates effective July 1st, 2015? Any more discussion? If not, roll call Madam Clerk.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Matillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Item five for discussion, fiscal year 2015, '16 budget. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you. Mr. Bridgeford? While we get keyed up here, Mr. Steele and I will present this overview together. He will start, and then I will pick up through the, through the presentation.
Thanks, Dr. Bracy. We're going to go through a few slides and get the school board members up to date on where we are with the budget process. As you know, the city is putting together their final budget, which will determine our final numbers. And right now, they're still scheduled to approve the city operating and CIP budget on 12 May. After that, of course, on the 21st, the school board meeting on the 21st, we're going to have to formally approve the budget. have to formally approve the budget using the city numbers into our budget. Next slide. So tonight, just want to go over the key dates, which a couple of them I've already mentioned, and then we're going to talk about the latest school budget and the revenue revisions. Since the, the time that we've put in the budget that the school board approved that was sent to the city, there've been some changes at the state level and state revenue that affected our numbers and some other miscellaneous revenue figures. And then we're going to talk about the latest city budget proposals based on things that have been discussed at the working session and, and how it affects the schools. Next slide. So again, here, here were the key dates that we've already been through, most of them were, the process has been a long process and we're getting to the, to the end. Again, we're meeting on May 7th, and the key dates coming up further quickly are this May 12th and May 21st date. Next slide. So I'm really going to turn it over to Dr. Brace. Oops, one more slide before I turn it over to him. Okay, so here we are with the general fund revenue at the final figures that we've gotten from the state after the governor signed the, the budget bill. And as you know, every time the governor signs the appropriation bill, VDOE, the Virginia Department of Education, has an elaborate calc tool that assists districts in defining exactly how that will translate into the state revenue for the schools. And also, they provide a forecast of what they see as ADM, because as you know, a lot of our state revenue is dependent on what the forecasted ADM is. So those figures have been revised, the, the state school funds and both, both the direct aid and the sales tax have gone up slightly as compared to last year. A lot of the increase is due primarily to an ADM increase. City funds are now based on, I guess, what we're seeing and what our assumption right now is we're looking at level funding at 52.4. There is a slight increase on other funds that reflects, one of the things that is in here is closing the print shop and using cash balances as a miscellaneous fund. So right now, we're looking at 141.5 million. Next slide. So I guess at this point, I'm going to turn, turn it over to Dr. Bracy, and he's going to discuss what is included in the budget, and it's based on the 52.4 that we currently see under discussion with the city.
If you look at the items that we, that we have included in there, the, the 1.5% increase for, starting on the 1st of the year, January 4th, the step increase also for, for the teachers. And these items that are, that we have that are included in the budget were the items that we had, had discussed. These are some of the items that was on the, the old list that was listed as our priorities that we were able to, to have included in the 52.4. And you see the, the employee increase, the healthcare benefits, the 7%, no increase to employee share, to preserve current staffing ratio requirements, increases to class size, and we've added positions to the CSEP and TRAC, the homeless transportation, athletic ban, increased allocations to high school and, and middle schools. Our star base is included in the, included, including the robotics, dual enrollment, first college, new directions, uplift, Port Town Magic. Also, we have the additional instructional assistance that we had discussed, how are they paid for the 10-month employees, the non-exempt for when a break for the two weeks? We have the additional elementary teachers, middle school reading specialists, and life science, seventh grade teachers, the athletic director, athletic trainers, the trainers which are part-time. We have the increased security officer, SRO coverage at our high school and, and middle school. Teachers expanded, teachers for expanded alternative education program. Currently, as you know, we have an elementary and middle. We want to increase that to include high school this year, pre-K teachers to eliminate waiting lists. Currently, what, currently, to, to elaborate on that a little bit, we have our pre-K basically staffed and numbers for students based on the current grant that we receive, but we have such a long waiting list at some of our pre-K centers where if we, if we could increase some of the teachers, we can get some of those students that are on the waiting list into the actual program, which will be beneficial to us in the long run because those students that are out are the students that need to be in there getting their early start so that as they progress in kindergarten, they won't be further behind those others that didn't participate, that did participate in the, in the program. We have additional operations and, and finance staff, increased clerical security to eight hours, the academic program for the DE and Saturday tutoring, increased substitute pay, restoring the academic professional development, which had been cut, increased bus driver and, and monitor, the standard work week. Those are things that, that are included in the budget. And as you remember, these are mainly all of, almost all of the items that we had discussed that we were able to include in the 52.4 covered. No, I'm fine. Yes. Now, are there any questions on that before I get into the, the less funding 1 million?
I have one question, I'm sorry. I see in here the step increase starting January 4, 2016, why not July 1?
Well, with, as you remember, when we made the initial request, we had a, we had submitted a, a unbalanced budget. So in order to come within that, if we started it in, in January, we would be able to shave off that, that additional request that we had. Initially, we wanted to do it in the beginning of the year, but due to the fact that we were looking at level funding, we started in the January.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The level one, level funding, less 1 million. Now with that, you, you've probably, well, you all have heard a lot of discussion in reference to the, the 1 million, the extra 1 million dollars that we're going to, that we're receiving, and that the, the, I guess, questions had been raised in terms of what we were going to do with the extra million dollars. So what we have looked at, Mr. Steele and I, we met today with the finance committee, and with that, the, the 1 million, this, what we can actually do is, the 1 million dollars that, we can actually, we can actually have our budget reduce 1 million to, let's say, 51.4 if we are allowed to take the 1 million now with our additional funds and pay our, we have our, what is, let me make sure to give you-
It's a debt payment.
Yeah, the debt payment to Amoresco Energy Lease, that's what I was trying to make sure I gave them the correct title of. If we can pay those funds from our fiscal year 2014 and get approval from, from the school board and city council, that's something that we can do. And that, that debt payment is 1.045 million. So if we can get a categorical, categorical adjustment in the current fiscal year to allow for prepayment for next year's debit that's in June 25th, June 15, then the city can reduce their appropriation to us for next year by that amount, the 1.04, 1.045 million. This would cause no impact on us while it could also help the city cut the 1.045 million to us for the next fiscal year, 15-16. But what we would ask, that this would be a one-time cut and be restored in 2016-17 because we have a last payment on the energy lease in fiscal year 2017. So we could do this without impeding anything that we already have within our budget. So it's basically, it looked as a win-win. And actually, with that, I would have to check my figures, but that would be something, I guess, like a 1.4 decrease for the, for the actual rate. Is that about right?
1.25.
1.25. Right, if, if we, if we did that, it will help the council cut that amount for the, the tax increase.
I like it. So see if I'm understanding correctly on that. What we're saying is if we go to, we go to council out of this budget cycle and ask for a categorical or a one-time fund, funding to pay for that debt that we're talking about, then by doing that, that's one less obligation that we would have in this budget that we're asking for. And therefore, by doing that, then we could go from 52.4, which is quote, "level funding", we could drop down to 1 million, down to 51.4.
Right. Because we will have satisfied that lease payment this year if we make that prepayment now.
But we had to get approval from them for to make a prepayment.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask, yeah, that has to do that categorical to ask because it's cross fiscal years.
Right. So we, we have to make the request approval from, from the board and then forward that to the city to get approval from them. So I guess to expedite that process, that's what we would be asking for tonight.
Move forward. There's no vote on that. There's no vote.
I was only kidding.
If we just, it's just an idea that-
Yeah, I think it's one of the ideas.
Because we have to wait until their budget.
But I could convey that, however you want, however you want to do it. It's a way, it's a way, it's a, it's a way for us to help the city out, we're all in this together. And it's, it's, it's not going to impede this part of-
What we're trying to do.
And, and we basically got everything that we, that the board requested, tried to put in this, this year's budget.
Does it impact instruction? Does not impact instruction.
Doesn't impact anything up here?
No, because we've got basically everything we've asked.
Job well done, Dr. Bracy. Mr. Steele, your staff.
Yeah, thank you.
And also, we need to, I want to thank Sarah, uh, board, because Sarah was the one that pushed us presenting a budget of our needs according to the state code. Because some of us were saying, you know, well, very good, I'm glad you did.
Remember now.
I know they haven't voted yet.
Yeah. Don't get, don't get happy, don't get happy. This is, this is what he's presenting tonight. We spent, we spent two hours earlier this morning looking at this stuff, and Mr. Steele and, and Dr. Bracy were the ones that came up with the Amoresco moving forward like that for a good way of doing it, so.
And Brittany.
And Brittany.
Brittany was waiting for the table, I had to see, but trust me.
I'm not going to slight anybody that was in the-
It was all, it was all worked together. It was all worked together, it wasn't one person takes all.
No, sir.
I was going to ask, I was, first, I wanted to say thank you for being proactive with everything because we are on the same team, we all do have limited resources. I was going to ask, after our last meeting, did you meet with city council staff and did you guys have that sit down? Because I know that at the end of the last board meeting, we did ask, Ms. Williams brought up, can we sit down and have a dialogue? Has there been a dialogue? Has there been continuous dialogue? And then you answered my question because was, had they heard this yet and were they, where were they with this? But you haven't conveyed this to them yet.
No, we did meet with them the very next day, that Friday, and just talked to them. And at that time, it was shared with us that, that, that what the city was looking at was actually their, within their departments as far as the cuts went.
Okay.
So that's, that's what, but we did. But Mr. Steele has been in contact with them since that, we both met on Friday, but he's been in, he's been in contact with them on a consistent basis for the last couple of weeks from, from that meeting, you know, asking for different things pertaining to the budget. So we've been in communication with one another.
Okay. I just hope that continues, even as we start next year's cycle, you know, because it's like, we, we put a staple in this and, you know, stamp it into approval, and then you guys start again, so.
The, the interim city manager and I, that's one thing that, that, that we discuss, you know, that, that we keep the lines of communication open because we want what's best for the city. You know, we don't, neither one of us were, we don't have a history of, so we're working together.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I saw a hand.
You did.
Okay, I did, okay. Listen, Nancy, and then Ms. Williams.
I, I already hit with Mr. Steele with this landscaping, seven to 14-day cycle. We've got a city that's famous for citing folks.
We, we, we talked about that, Mr. Nancy.
What answer?
Okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, I'm not going to answer.
I just want to make sure that we're not going to get cited and have to go do emergency cutting.
Okay. Well, we were going to, we were going to get to that once we left the, the other, I mean, but since you're there, we're going to-
Go ahead, tell them. Go ahead, go ahead.
But since you're there, we're going to, we're going to talk with them about the, the 14 days, because a lot can happen in 14 days, particularly as you get deeper into the summer with the rain, and you can't get in there and grass grows faster during the summer. We're going to look at that, the seven days is, is what we want to try to hold to. We understand that they may have contracted, already contracted this out, but if we can take a look at who the contractor is, maybe something that we can work with the, the people who have been contracted with to make sure that we have an understanding of, of what our needs are.
Okay. And maybe a 10-day cycle would be, be more amicable. But I've got, we've got somebody coming home from Virginia Tech in this very field of study, and he's going to be with you in about two Fridays.
All right.
And he'll be able to advise you on that.
I welcome any expert opinion.
Oh, he's an expert.
I'm not an expert, I just want to see well-manicured lawns in front of our schools year-round.
I just don't want to have to go and cut the grass on Labor Day at Olive Branch like I've done before. I'm just telling, it's just-
Okay, Ms. Williams.
Who handles the contract for the landscaping? Is that the city or?
That's a city contract, so their, their contract covers all the school property also. And so, actually, they fund it also, so they do the funding, they do the contract. They ask us to notify them if there's a violation, like the grass is growing too fast, and they address it to the contractor. We asked if there could be maybe a different type of arrangement because if we have a, a contractor performance issue, we, we don't have the leverage against the contractor because we're, we're not controlling it, so.
Which we have had.
I guess we'll see, this contract was just awarded in April, it was awarded, I guess, a little bit past when it, it would have been ideal because the growing season had already started, so already we're kind of in a catch-up mode right now, but it just started, so we'll see what happens.
Because I received a complaint about the grass at one of the elementary schools, the kids are playing, and the grass was so high, they couldn't, couldn't walk through, so it is not effective and it is not working.
That's why we discussed it about trying to see if we can get a, a piggyback ride off that for, well, I don't know, Chris, Keith, I don't, I don't know if it's seven days or 10 days. All I know is, it's got to be better than 14 days.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
That's too tall.
I mean, yeah.
We, we all decided that this morning when we were talking, so it's just a matter of-
So can someone look into that because I think that's too tall for little kids to be out there trying to be in the playground.
At first, I thought Ms. Williams was going to say we lost a child out there, we couldn't find them, you know, because the grass was so tall.
In fact, it was my daughter.
Yeah, we, we've already said that, that Mr. Steele is going to make, make contact on that.
Here, you want to finish coming up?
Can we, um, do we know when, when landscaping takes place? Are principals informed of that? Do they know that schedule?
I'll let Dr. Shepherd answer that one if I could.
Currently, we're on an eight-day grass cutting cycle, and the contract just started. They are planning catch-up due to a lot of rain prepared. Prior to that, the landscaping company set a schedule to Mr. Robinson, who pretty much facilitates that. Each principal has received a copy. If there's any adjustments, Mr. Robinson immediately contacted the principal, either by email or by direct contact, and let them know that there's a change in the schedule. We did get some recent requests that grass was in suspension, so we did contact the landscaping company and he cut grass, so decided to make up for that.
I think one, one scenario was that grass was- I think one scenario was that grass was being cut as the children were getting on to the bus and parents picking up kids.
We did address that with them.
Okay, so making sure, right, because that allergies and stuff, that can be a problem.
We did address that.
Okay.
Who has, oh, good question. Who has the landscaping contract?
What's the name of the contractor?
Lawn Care. Lawn Care.
Through the city.
I mean, sorry, Lawn Dorts, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Lawn Dorts.
Through the city. Okay.
Lawn Dorts.
And so, you all are working on that, you say, to see if we could?
Well, we asked, we asked them, when we looked at it today, we talked about it, we asked them to look at the possibility of us piggybacking on that and if we had to bring a separate piece of contract in for the cut, to cut more, then so be it, or if we had to wind up getting out. We figured we may not be able to get our own contract because they just let the contract last month. But we, Mr. Steele is going to look and see if we can piggyback on or what we can negotiate to, you know, to get that part done without costing us a whole lot of money. But that was a big concern of ours, too.
Supplement.
And it looks bad.
Supplement. Okay. Did you want to talk to about the?
One of the other things, a couple other items that are in the current city budget discussions that I wanted to mention is, and one of them is in the West Haven Roof CIP project. That was one of the projects in the original city manager budget was funded, but then with a lot of the cuts, they looked at three options and right now, they're looking at three options. One is asking the schools to use some of the carry-forward money, if any, that will be used for that project. And second of all, they are looking at, they didn't want to incur any debt, but they're being pressed to say, hey, for this one project, that's a long-term project, it certainly qualifies for CIP, and if you don't want to do ongoing funds, look at debt financing this. So, that's being discussed. And then, looking at, initially, they were looking at deferring it, you know, they're looking at all these cuts and they just wanted to defer it. So, we're monitoring that closely to see how it's going to end up, but I wanted everybody to be aware that that project is kind of up in the air right now. Besides the landscaping contract and part of the city manager's, interim city manager's presentation, I just want to mention some long-term things that don't necessarily affect this upcoming year's budget, but things that he was encouraging the city council to look at further in out-years because out-years will also be a challenge, is things like moving city offices out of leased space. And we've been contacted about even the central admin offices on the third floor and because they wanted to consolidate some city offices, say into City Hall, get out of some leased spaces, and if we could move somewhere. So, that won't happen this year and there will obviously be some upfront costs, but it could have some long-term savings that could help the city. One of the questions was, we were looking at abandoning DAC, but then going back into DAC, either the city going into DAC or maybe, you know, central admin or other offices going into DAC. I just throw that out there. A couple other things that they mentioned is taking a further look at any opportunities for shared services and so that's still out there. Efficiency study, they were talking about doing an efficiency study and I think it was implied that both the city and the schools maybe participate in some type of efficiency study. And then, looking at city side, doing an energy audit. And you're probably aware that the schools have already done this twice and we've gotten some energy savings, so now the city's looking at it and looking at that. In some of our energy projects coming up, we're also taking a look, if we're not going to get any CIP funding, of maybe, again, taking another look at those energy-related projects that have a high payback, that we could take advantage of that, too. Again, it may not be an ideal situation because you could get better financing through a CIP project, but if it's not going to come, then we might want to take a look at those options. And next slide. And so, these are the two key dates.
All right, now, Mr. Manz.
Yes, just a couple questions here. So, if I understand you correctly, on the last slide with the West Haven roofing project, on the carry-forward, what is being discussed and so forth is that if there are any funds at the end of the fiscal year of our budget, let's just say, for example, $1 million, that the city would be asking us to consider carrying that $1 million over into the next fiscal year to pay for that roofing project or?
Yes.
Okay.
Currently, you may, back in 2001, city council passed a resolution that said if the schools have any unassigned leftover fund balance, that the money, because it's unspent and this is required by Virginia Code, the money would go back to the city.
Correct.
And the agreement would be that 75% would be re-appropriated to the schools for capital improvement-type projects, 25% would go back to the city. Since then, and there've been some discussions with the city in changing that from 75-25 to 100%, but those, that type of agreement hasn't been settled yet or finally proposed.
And then my, another question is, up here, we're talking about moving city offices out of leased space, the DAC center. I know we've had some issues there that needs to be, there's some long-term remodeling.
Half million dollar AC.
Exactly.
That's what we're looking at now to do.
So, let me see if I understand what you were saying. Did you say that there's the prospect of moving out of the DAC center as we had originally discussed, but then moved back into the DAC center?
Well, already, we're looking at moving New Directions out of the DAC center.
Right.
And CSEP out of the DAC center. So, we'll have an empty building because we didn't want to spend a half a million dollars on this HVAC project primarily. We'd also save some utility costs and other costs that would be some savings, too. But now, this discussion is coming up and so, the DAC facility is open for maybe alternate use. You wouldn't necessarily have to spend some upfront costs. You would have to pay for, for instance, that HVAC project. And also, if there's an alternate use, because right now, it's configured with, you know, a kitchen and classrooms, and if it's going to be office space, you'd have to maybe, you know, do some reconfiguration. So, it's upfront cost if you're going to end up doing that. But that involves some planning and taking a look at other alternatives.
Right, because I would, I mean, I'd want to very seriously look at if, I mean, if moving out and then moving back in is going to cost more than what we're at right now, that just doesn't make sense. And then, just the last thing here, I noticed you got, we've got an efficiency study on the table and I do agree with that, but I also think, and I know Dr. Bracy has also mentioned this and so forth, I think it's critical that we get in place a curriculum audit as well. And I think that is something that's way long overdue. I mean, I think we've heard that the last one that we had was 16 years out and yet, since 1999, I think, is what was quoted. It wasn't quoted that?
What's that returning to? Cyber.
They came in here and they did it just before Dr. Stockish came in, I think.
Oh, one?
It may be closer to 11 years or 12, that it happened just before Stockish came in.
Okay. Never, yeah, nevertheless, though, I mean, when you look at how much the curriculum has changed over a 12-year period, that's at least two cycles right there. And I think that a curriculum audit is going to be significantly important considering of where our standing is with our schools as well. You know, we've talked about the importance of getting all these schools fully accredited. I think a curriculum audit would tell us a lot with where things are. So, I know we've got the phrase up there, longer term, but I just think a curriculum audit is something that needs to make a midterm list or something.
Well, now, the curriculum audit is not shown as longer term. That's already in the process now of taking place. You know, what we're doing now is making sure that, depending on the direction that we go, we've talked with Ms. Brazil and Bruce about it, if we have to have any MWBE requirements with that, so they're looking into that. As a matter of fact, they have our proposed list of spending to look through because we want to make sure that we don't violate anything in our spending that we have for the remainder of the year. So, that's already included in that. It's comprehensive. It's not just for curriculum. It's for, it's for the finance, it's for transportation. Yeah, operations. It's inclusive of the whole operation.
Do you have any idea of a timeline of what we're looking at, when this could be started or?
For the curriculum audit?
For the whole piece.
The whole piece or just the curriculum or?
Right. Well, what I asked Ms. Brazil to do was to give me an idea of how long that process could possibly take. Now, if we look at, I think, going through, was it the VAS?
Right now, Dr. Bracy has asked me to look at potential sources and we've identified three potential sources. One is, the Virginia Department of Planning and Budget has a program called School Reviews. And in fact, Portsmouth Public Schools went through that process several years ago and brought in a company sponsored for the Virginia Department of Planning and Budget to provide a full efficiency review of operations, finance, and the non-classroom-type academic-type stuff. And a report was provided. Another entity that does the same thing, similar type, similar thing, is the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. And they have a school review process and it covers a lot of the same areas and they bring in a lot of experts, some of them are superintendents and other things, and they come in and do a similar type of view. Another organization that Dr. Bracy met at the National School Board Association is another company that also does these types of things. So, we've already reached out to them, they've already given us some literature and we're getting some further feedback, I think, from the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. We were going to sit down and talk about which one, which method is, or which source may be the best for this and if we need to go out for competition or not, or maybe go through a state-sponsored review process.
Right.
Okay, I had Dr. Wood and Ms. Hines.
No, I was just going to ask, the efficiency study, I think it was answered, would cover the review of the contracts that we have in terms of purchasing.
Purchasing would be one of the organizations we're looking at, yes.
And then also, with the DAC issue, from what I understand, the city would save considerably in terms of moving out of those leased spaces because they're renting from private owners. And so, with that being said, it would seem to me that would free up money if need be for the DAC renovation. So, you know, that's just something to consider. Right.
And we will have some dialogue with them as far as a transitioning period, if that's the route that we're going with that, to try to have a plan in place for.
Give you a feel, the DAC has about twice the square footage as the third floor.
Okay, Ms. Hines.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to talk about the West Haven roof just for a minute. I mean, if we are going to do this with carry-forward money, what is the timing of replacing the roof? Because that is a loud and a noisy and a dusty and a dirty job that I would like to avoid having it done when there's children in the building. So, if we are going to do this with carry-forward money, what is our timeframe for doing this? I mean, this isn't something we're going to start in September.
No, it's to be determined. In fact, the design hasn't even been finished yet, so.
Go ahead.
As part of the design, they'll work out an agreeable schedule of when the construction will happen, so it's to be determined, but those factors will be considered, definitely.
Okay, and just one more thing, and this is before your time, it was several years ago, at one point, it was the design or the wish to have all of 801 go to Clark, which would vacate the third floor here.
And IRC.
And IRC. I mean, there was talk at one time to consolidate all entities of Portsmouth into Clark.
Right.
I mean, is that still? I got, yeah. I mean, if they are going to vacate us and we do have that large space over there.
That, let me put it like this. I think, Mr. Steele and I had this conversation the other day because I asked that question. I didn't know it, but my understanding is, we had started a design phase for Clark.
It was completed.
It was completed?
Okay. It's 100% complete.
Okay, it's completed. The question I had is, how far did that go? Was that building an extension on? Because I, what was the final figure you told me that was, something like 14, 12 million?
The design was completed. It was about 800,000 to 900,000 for the design. It was for a project that I think was in the 14 to 16 million dollar range. It included moving the third floor, IRC, DAC functions, you know, over to Clark. It also included expanding some alternative ed and so there would be maybe even an additional small facility added on to Clark to handle that. So, it was pretty significant. It included a lot of structural and equipment updates and that's why the high cost. So, that was in the works. The plan is complete. The drawings are on the shelf.
So, that was what Dr. Stockish was looking for, consolidate everyone over there.
Mm-hmm.
So, is there still a viable alternative? I think it is because I told Mr. Steele, I said, I haven't seen anything on it. So, the question is, is that a, I guess, a regular update or was it, had it gone to the extreme of putting, like you said, equipment and everything else over there also that maybe was coming at a later date? I don't know. I wasn't privy to that. I found out about it, I asked Mr. Steele about it just this week because I remember we had talked about moving over there, but I didn't even know they had done the design phase of it. Okay, I see two hands. Go ahead, Mr. Keith, Mr. Manz.
I bet the deputy city manager knows something about it, or one of the deputy city managers knows something about it.
We all heard about it.
Oh, yeah.
That was part of when we were handcuffed to stop.
Right.
Because Stockish presented that he was trying to consolidate everything to SH Clark.
But I didn't know they had done the design phase.
I mean, and that's how operations got over there, right? Isn't that how operations got over there? We shut down Burton Point and that's how, and that's how transportation and a few of those other departments.
That's how they started.
I think they worked that out for the city.
I mean, because that's a huge facility over there.
It was supposed to be made very nice with a cafeteria and we were, not really, because I don't know, but they were supposed to move off the third floor. IRC was, that was the presentation that we got from Dr. Stockish and he claimed he talked to the city, former city manager. But then everybody went completely amnesia.
Yeah, there's a lot of amnesia going on.
Amnesia, no one knew what the money was for and.
I remember that part.
It was.
I do remember that part.
I've got one more thing. I'm sorry, I had one more thing. I wanted to say thank you for keeping the efficient study in. I think it's a, I think overall, it's going to pay dividends, so thank you for keeping that in.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, was that it?
Yes, thank you.
I didn't see your hand.
Oh, yeah, yeah, on page four.
Okay, I thought I did, that's why I didn't want to.
No, that's right, and I almost had amnesia right here, but no. On page four, I'm just curious, on the numbers that are here.
38 minutes, bro.
There's a difference of the 2014-15 budget, the final number down there is 139.5. 2015-16 is 141.5. I mean, if my math isn't off too terribly much, I think that was, that's like a difference of roughly almost two or 2.1. So, my question is, is the difference because of the differences in the items up above? here or what?
If we did the calculation right.
Yeah, actually 2.0.
Yeah, state spending contributed to a lot of that, yes. And again, it was, a lot of it was because our forecasted ADM is trending upwards.
And that, right, and that other funds, that's the?
Those are miscellaneous revenue funds. And one of the things that's in there is we're closing the print shop. That's a separate fund. It has a cash balance and we want to move that into the general fund to help us with next year's budget.
Okay.
Print shop question. When we close the print shop and we sell those machines that are there, where will those funds go? Will those go into this other funds?
That goes into the miscellaneous funds. Miscellaneous revenue, yes.
A lot of the equipment's leased though.
The ones that are leased, we've already sent the cancellation notice and part of terms of a lease will be providing notice. We can get those back as part of a contract.
Just like to commend you all for doing a good job because you all have worked very hard. The chairman and the vice chair, Dr. Bracy, Mrs. Steele, Brittany, and everyone. And you've been transparent with us, open, and I think you've done an excellent job presenting this. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Do we get a supplement?
You do get a supplement.
Thank you.
I did.
I was going to say, Ms. Parent?
I just want to, you know, you were. Mr. Lamb, you brought up, and I think we've brought this up before, because of the curriculum audit, the number of years that since we've had a curriculum audit. It's nice to know that Dr. Anita Win Taylor, who's had experience with curriculum audit and worked with the Department of Education, that's going to be one of her top priorities because she discussed that in great detail. So she'll be quick to look at that because when you look at the written curriculum, which we know what that is because that's the state curriculum. And then you've got the tested curriculum, which we already know what that is because the kids are getting ready to take that. It's the middle piece, the taught curriculum, that that's where the creativity. But the audit, when you look at a curriculum audit, it's got to be a lot, many years ago when we started out with the SOLs, we had our curriculum. The state came out with its curriculum and for some reason, we didn't get on board to make sure that their curriculum was infused, that we were actually teaching the state's curriculum that they were testing. And so we made sure through that curriculum audit that all of that was in there. So once again, we've got to make sure that what is the blueprints, that those blueprints are infused and we've got curriculum specialists here in the science, math, English, and social studies. Because if you have your own curriculum and it is not aligned with what the state's testing, we ran into that situation a long time ago and that's why Portsmouth got behind and other school divisions made sure that curriculum was very tight and they started improving. And finally, you know, that's how we got all of our schools all accredited because there was an alignment. We need to go back and agree to revisit that and make sure that we're really tight and that teachers are actually teaching from the state curriculum.
Okay, I saw both hands go up. Dr. Whittaker.
Yes. Concerning the print shop, how many employees are there and where are they being placed?
There's three employees there. The manager plans to retire in November and the two other ones, we've already met with and are talking some alternatives with them. And one of them right now is an MBA that we're looking to assist in purchasing for, to help the backlog that we currently have awaiting the new manager.
So you said one of them will be going to purchasing?
Yes. And the other one, it looks like they're, they've requested to go to facilities, I believe. Is that right, Dr. Shepherd?
The other two facilities.
Okay, Mr. Lamb, Ms. Hines, did you have a hand?
I don't think so.
Okay, just to make sure because I thought I saw your hand.
I think I was.
It had already been, I just had to catch it out of the corner of my eye.
Yeah, I was just in response with what Mr. Parent's saying. I mean, I think you've said, I think you've summed it up. It seems as though that for years, the state curriculum and whatever was being done here, for whatever reason, was not aligned. And now we've gotten ourselves in the position of six out of 19 schools that's fully accredited. And I think that that curriculum audit is imperative to see exactly where we are and where we're not. So the Dr. Taylor or whoever, I sure hope it's number one priority. It's just something that I think that we need to have done sooner instead of later because of the situation that we are in.
I don't think you're going to have a problem because it's going to, that's one of her top priorities to move on that.
Will Dr. Win Taylor be at our next meeting? Does she start the 20th?
20.
So she will be?
She'll be at the next board meeting.
Anita.
It's Anita Taylor.
Anita Win.
Win Taylor?
Yes.
It's Win Taylor.
Dr. Anita Win.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It sounded like you said Guin.
Oh, no, no. I meant Dr. Win.
Should be here the 20th for the next board meeting.
She'll be in time for the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Let's move right along to item number six. Request for approval of a resolution to dispose of surplus property. Dr. Bracy, if you can handle, Mr. Steele.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This particular item, as you may know, there's a school board policy that requires school board approval. Anytime we want to surplus for sale items over $500, in this case, we have school buses that we're surplusing because of the new school buses coming in. In addition to that, we have several utility vehicles, white fleet vehicles, that are beyond economical repair. We want to surplus them without replacement. Recently, operations had a meeting with, and myself had a meeting with, the city garage and are looking at the most efficient use of vehicles and taking a look at our white fleet, we can do away with these vehicles without replacement, save both the school district a lot of money, but also save city garage in trying to maintain very old vehicles with repair parts that are hard to find. So we're requesting approval for selling these vehicles.
May for approval.
Second.
Okay, let's move to probably the second that we approved the sale of the vehicles listed in the discussion. I have one question. This first vehicle in the white fleet, 45,352 miles. And you say it's beyond economical repair.
Wrecked.
Is that a wrecked vehicle or a typo?
I'd have to check. Yeah, it's 1997. Do you know the specifics, Dr. Shepherd?
That's 18 years old though.
We'd have to check that one. Yeah.
45,000 miles, less than a wreck.
I'd love to have that.
What did he say? I didn't hear.
The ones that were used on the spare that the garage staff viewed that due to the oldest, they can't find repair parts for. And that was one of the recommendations that was made from the garage. The white fleet, the white fleet recommendations were made by the staff of the city garage. We made the recommendations for the yellow fleet, which were our school buses.
Okay. All right. Lamb?
Yeah, thank you. So if I understand this right, these buses and so forth, as per policy of the school board, that once you hit a certain year, the buses, 18 years or whatever, then they are to be put up, possibly for sale or salvage or so? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we have a phased replacement program for the school buses, of course.
Correct.
And there is a state, some people think it's a mandate, but actually it's a recommendation. And it used to be 12 years. And it's been shifted to 15, I believe. So they recommend that your fleet doesn't get over 15 years. So that's part of the phased replacement is to replace them, that you don't get, you know, old buses. But there are, sometimes there's a bus that might be out of sync. I'm not sure if it's on this list, but others that they were in an accident or there's some maintenance issue that may actually accelerate. You'll have one that goes faster than what a normal age phase replacement would be.
Okay, so we're getting 12 or 11 new buses? Or there's 13 here?
Yeah, I think we're actually getting slightly less than that. Is that correct?
We're getting around 10. We have nine in now, nine, as of yesterday, nine buses had arrived. I'm over to you, Ron.
So it's not, but the gist of my question is, it's not going to cause any more?
Disruption.
Issues or disruptions within transport or anything like that?
No, I actually don't approve it. The buses are newer. They all have two cameras. They're a lot more efficient. So this replacement will be helpful for the operation.
And one last question. According to the resolution that I see here, the sale of these buses, whatever that amount of money would be, are we saying, we are asking in this resolution that that money then be transferred to the CIP School Bus Procurement Fund? That's just a request? That's not necessarily guaranteed or?
It's not guaranteed. This is the same wording that it was in last year's resolution. We did the same thing last year where the surplus would go in to help replenish school buses. Right now, they're at a million-dollar clip, but we're hitting a wave of school buses that that won't even meet that wave requirement. So whatever can assist, additional money into that million dollars, we want it.
Right. So the intention is to sell these off for whatever we can get and that money will go to?
More school buses.
To help pay for school buses versus asking the city for brand-new money.
It reduced the amount.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, not really reduce, it'll just supplement for the additional buses that we're going to need to replace.
That's a better supplement.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let's move to probably the second. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whittaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridge Ford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, request for the approval of a revised budget categorical adjustments for 2014-15. Dr. Bracy and Mr. Steele, you got it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you know, at the end of the year, just like last year, we put in categorical adjustments to try to align our spending to the categories that we're spending against. We're under categorical adjustment, not lump sum. So if we're spending more in one category, we have to adjust it. As you know, right now, we just submitted the categories for next year's budget. So to give you a feel, a year ahead of time, we're putting in what we think are going to be the categorical amounts. And things change, things change at the state level on our revenue and things like that. So it's normally expected that we'll have some adjustments going toward the end of the year. We're recommending this categorical adjustment to align what we think our spending patterns are going to be toward the end of the year. We expect, and we wanted to warn also the city, that we think we're going to have potentially another final one, depending again on what things happen on our spending plan. Some things may drop out, other things we'll have to replace for various reasons. So we expect, we're asking for approval of this one, but also to give a heads up, we might have another one as we get to the very end of the year.
May for approval.
Second.
Moving to probably the second that we adopt spending categorical funding resolutions given discussion, Ms. Hines and then Mr. Lamb.
I sent an email earlier this week asking for, for lack of a better term, a spending plan to move 5 million out of instruction and to move 3 million into technology and 2.6 into maintenance. I'm just, I'm concerned that we're moving money out of instruction that maybe we could do something else with. But also too, if there's plans for this, are we in a timeframe that we can purchase these things and have them by June 30 when we're sitting at May 7? You know, we're looking at five weeks, six weeks at a max to spend 5 and 1/2 million dollars that we're looking to move. So while I want to support the superintendent, I don't have a plan to go with. And I just have a hard time justifying moving 5 and 1/2 million dollars with no plan at this point of the year.
Okay. We do have a plan. And what we did, we actually shared it with Bruce and Ms. Brazil this evening to take a look at, to tell us that very thing. What are some items up there that will allow us to just go ahead and spend without following the MWBE requirements as such? She's going to let us know the timeline of that, if she sees it going beyond, because she knows that we have a deadline. Now, we have a Plan B as well of some other items that won't take as long to move through. But what we have listed are those that we feel that are most important, but we just want to see how long it will take, you know, in their opinion, because we want to make sure we go through the process. So once she gets back with us, hopefully within the next week or so, to give us an idea of the type of timeline that we're looking at. But we have it if the board would like to see where we are with it. You know, it's something, we already had that, but we wanted to make sure before we gave it to you, that it was an accurate portrayal of what we would actually be doing. So I didn't want to give you something that it would change because we wouldn't have enough time to actually follow through with it.
Got a plan?
Mr. Lamb and Ms. Williams?
Yeah, when I saw this resolution and so forth, I have some very strong concerns as well with regards to instruction, that 5.6 million dollars is being moved out of this on many different levels with the fact of, for one, I mean, we've all heard from teachers and administrators and so forth, that there's basic, there's resources that are needed in these classrooms. And I'm seeing 5.6 million dollars that can be going towards those resources because it's in that proper category. Again, we're needing resources and so forth because, as I've said already, of where we are as far as accreditation, we've talked about resources in the classroom from technology over to basic resources to help as well. And 5.6 million dollars could go a very long ways with that. I just think that in a category and where we are as a district that needs it the most, where funding needs the most, I just don't think that moving 5.6 million dollars out of that category is the most feasible approach to this.
What I did before I put this plan together, we sent a survey out and we asked principals specifically, what are your needs as we close out the end of the year? Each school sent back their needs as far as what it would take for them, which included tutorials, after-school remediation for the SOLs, materials, resources. We have that. That's included in the plan. Also included in the plan is the wireless upgrades that we need in all of the buildings. That's included in the, also the, what is it, the backpack program at the high schools, those tablets that we have to purchase for the high school students. That's included in this budget for the remainder of the year. So instruction is not, we're not taking anything away from instruction. We're looking at the actual needs that were mentioned from the schools as well as our technology department upgrading and making sure that we maintain the infrastructure needed for the type of testing that we're going to have to do this online, the increase in the usage by the tablets in the buildings at the pre-K level. We're doing the wireless, the infrastructure there as well. So we put it out there and we made sure that we had everything that the schools and the principals said that they needed for the end of the year and just to be part of the. the facility itself, the need. So we made sure that we had that covered because I didn't want to, I don't want to take anything from anyone that there was a need for instructionally. That's first and foremost.
And I'm glad to see, and I'm glad to hear that you've got a plan or a plan that's been put in place. I though have to concur also with Ms. Duncan-Hines on this, so I would have liked to have seen that plan on paper to kind of see exactly what we're talking about because right now, all I've got to go on is this right here showing 5.6 out of instruction, increases in administration attendance, health, and pupil transportation, and operations, and maintenance, and technology. I mean, what I'm saying is, here's the resolution calling for, you know, these reductions and these additions, and I don't, but I don't see the plan.
Right.
And I think if I saw the plan on paper, that could possibly explain this, but right now, I don't have it. I just, I don't have it. All I see is this.
Ms. Nance?
Well, I have to put myself in Dr. Bracy's shoes. It's like you walked into a house to run it and no one was there. The interim superintendent had left prior to your coming and what have you. I understand having to move money, and this technology is only to augment instruction.
Correct.
Because we have a desperate, desperate, desperate problem with bandwidth in our buildings.
Right.
Okay? You talk about curriculum audit to see what's going on. If we don't increase this bandwidth, that's going to be problem number one, is those children in the classroom being able to access the information that's needed and to be tested on it and what have you. So I understand, I don't think we're taking it away from instruction, it's just support and augmentation of instruction. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
I don't, I just want to reiterate, I don't have a problem with the technology piece of it. I know that that will come back around to the classroom. I understand, I understand that part. But another $2.6 million to operations to put them at $18 million for the year, what are we doing with that 2.6 in operations? I mean, I can sit here and justify it, and I can sit in your shoes and look at the instructional piece and look at the education piece and looking at walking into a house and things need to be kept up. I understand all that. My concern, A, is that it's the timeframe, and we're sitting at five weeks when POs are done and finished, and June 30 comes and, I, no. You understand what I'm saying. So my concern is the timeframe, but what are we doing with the 2.6 in operations? Because everything I've heard comes back to instruction and technology, but what is the 2.6 million going to do in operations?
Do you have the? Well, I know some of the things that we've done immediately already is to pay for student transportation and get that cost off of the schools. Another one is we have an agreement with the chief of police, and one of the things we're providing is additional security to our high school and middle schools. We're paying for that to augment those resources. Some of the things that they're doing will, in the spending plan, will directly affect the classroom by replacing a lot of student desks and chairs and cafeteria tables and things like that. So a lot of these are directed right into the school. They may be listed in a different category, but these things are in the classroom, in the school for a lot of that spending plan.
So we're picking up for years past where these things haven't been done?
Yeah, sure. I mean, things like furniture tend to be the last thing you replace.
Or not done to a scale?
I call it wear and tear.
Wear and tear.
Plus your audits in here too, right? And this money?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Whitaker and Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams?
I was simply going to say that, piggyback on what Mr. Nance said, when Dr. Bracy came in, he's only been here since February, and I think to put all this together is pretty good.
Amazing.
And also, we cannot be at the point where we're going to micromanage everything that he does and says. If he has a plan, he said, you can see the plan. But to go through each $5 million or whatever, he told you generally what that will cover.
Right.
And as far as operations, the same thing. I do know this, the timeframe, that where I work in the city of Portsmouth, if the PO is done before June 30th, they can deliver after.
Right.
So it's not, you can order it up to June 30th.
Right.
And it still should come out of this year's fund.
That's correct.
And they do it every day because I do. So when they talked about that not being done, that was not true. So I trust that they will do what they can to get these things in place for the school system, but I also trust, and I know without a shadow of a doubt, that if it's not spent, that it goes back.
Right, yeah.
That we don't keep it, it goes back. And so I trust Dr. Bracy to do the things that he needs to do.
That's why he has the MWBE involved, so they know what we're facing.
Right, and we do have the MWBE program that we have to be sure
Right.
That we're following those guidelines because that is also a legal issue for us. So we are going to make sure that we hold everyone accountable, but if he says that he's going to do this, I trust that he's going to do it. And if he doesn't, then we have another issue. So that's where I stand with that.
Okay, and where I stand, I agree with Mrs. Williams, I'm going to support Dr. Bracy in this plan. I see the transfers as a way of enhancing instruction for our students, which is definitely needed. And I also feel that we have to think about the environment that our students are in in these schools. We have some relatively old schools, old equipment, as you said, desks, cafeteria tables, et cetera. These are things that need to be replaced, and our students deserve that, and so I think we should support him with this plan.
Reverend Patillo?
I also want to say that I feel very comfortable with what's being presented mainly because he got information from building-level principals first. As a board, we can assess the needs of individual schools, it's up to the individual building administrators to do that. So being that they sent him there, dreamless as they've been calling as I visit the schools, I'm very confident that he's going to do what needs to be done to meet the needs of the individual buildings. I also would like to see if it's possible, if we could include building-level administrators at the beginning of the budget process also, because from what they tell me as I visit schools, they're normally not included in the beginning of the budget process. So I think that would help also to assess what the needs should be for the upcoming budget for the upcoming year for that. Thank you, Dr. Bracy, for this, and I'm confident that we can make an incredible improvement to our schools with this.
Right. Okay. Okay, request for approval. Please make the motion. Mr. Nance, second. Mr. Nance, second. We're moving in property second that we approved the request for the budget categorical adjustments for 2014-15. More discussion if not, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no, it passes.
Thank you.
One question. Do you have a copy of that, Fleming?
Sure.
Thank you.
They're going to get it the 21st.
Yeah, that's the one that you get from Mrs. Brazil.
You're going to give them a copy the 21st.
Right.
Yeah. All of us get a copy of it.
You're going to get a copy.
Okay.
But he wanted to make sure he checked. We've got to make sure all those things are done before you get it.
Item number eight, request for the approval of authorization for the division superintendent to pay all outstanding bills and carry it through June 30, 2015. This is standard procedure that this is done. Board's pledge.
With approval.
Second.
Moving in property second, that we approved the authorization for the division superintendent to pay all outstanding bills. We don't want anything hanging over our heads for the end of the year, but then, there's no discussion, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, so make sure all the bills are paid.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine for discussion. Calendar items, July organization meeting and summer retreat. Back about a week or two ago, board clerk sent out a suggested date for reorganization. It just so happened I picked the second, which was on a Thursday night because we used to meet on a Thursday. Reorganization meeting normally takes about an hour to hour and a half. Has that a good date for us to meet on? If it is, then Ms. Chambers could put that down as a possible date. Did you get any feedback on that, that anyone suggesting other dates?
It did. Good.
I know I didn't, I'm sorry.
And the suggested time was 5:30 or 6 o'clock.
It was 5:30.
5:30. And we're not going to have dinner and anything, just come in, get reorganization and get out.
We always say that.
Oh, I remember when we had to journey and come back.
We always say it.
We don't want to put any other business on it except for reorganization. We don't want to put any voting items on, we don't want to put any just for the items on. Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, I'm okay with the date. I mean, please go ahead and make it convenient for everyone. I will say, it looks like that I may be going, school-related issues, I'll be coming back from Northern Virginia on that day. But what I'm saying though is if it's convenient for everyone, go ahead for the 5:30. Promise I won't get a speeding ticket on my way back, but, you know.
Don't ever make that promise in Carroll County.
Yeah.
Okay, 5:30 on July the 2nd?
Sounds good.
Okay. Summer retreat.
Six floor.
Oh, yeah.
Six floor for this?
We do it on the third floor.
Okay.
We do it on the third floor. If we do it on the third floor, that way we won't stay long.
We hope.
There's no air. I'll bring action.
No, Dr. Bracy, they're working on getting that fixed, if they haven't already.
You'll make sure of it.
Just tell them to keep the system up.
Oh, that's right, as long as they don't cut the system down, that's right, they did find out what the problem was.
Oh, they turned the system back.
Okay, summer retreat, either July the 31st through August the 1st or August the 7th through August the 15th, were the two days I picked.
August 7th.
It's two weeks before school starts, which is normally what we tried to do in the past, and Dr. Bracy didn't have a problem with those weekends, so I put them out there as a proposal, so.
Eight.
Like this one?
Not the 15th, the eight.
No, I'm sorry, 8/7 through 8/8. That's the year 15.
Right.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's preferred.
That's preferred.
8/7, 8/8.
August the 7th through August the 8th would be the retreat date.
31.
31 what?
Can you give us July 31 and 1?
8/1, yeah.
Oh, July 31st. Oh, July 31st through August the 1st.
That's my vote.
You prefer that one?
I concur with Keith.
What, everyone else goes with the August the 7th through August the 8th? Okay, August. Does that kill your beast, does that kill your beast?
Well, there's a family birthday that follows that weekend, so that's all. That's all.
We can move it back, we can accommodate her if she has, if nobody cared, nobody's family. Yeah, we want her, if she can be there, she has a family birthday.
31st?
So you want to go to the 31st?
I prefer the 31st, yes, sir.
Did you really like that person, the family?
It's daddy.
Okay.
Okay, so July the 31st through August the 1st would be the retreat date?
Thank you.
Let's see how nice we are.
Thank you.
Okay, so you'll be able to enjoy your birthday.
Thank you.
And since Dr. Bracy hasn't been here a year, we won't have to go through evaluating the superintendent.
Oh, wonderful.
That'll give him a chance to give us his strategies and things that he's going to put together.
31st in August.
And that's the briefing center.
Make sure you look at his contract and make sure we didn't say that we would.
You didn't.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
Stop trying to put things in, I didn't hear what you said.
7/31.
Okay, so 7/2, 5:30 will be the reorganization.
Mm-hmm.
July 31st, August 1st. July 31st, we normally come in at 5 o'clock for dinner, start at 5:30, finish between 8 and 9. Then 7:30 for breakfast on the August 1st, and we roll until we finish.
Do we have a location for that?
And I'm going to ask Kathy for the, July 31st, 8/1st would be the briefing center. If we can secure that, then we'll send an email out letting you know we got a briefing center. And also, as before, send in any recommended topics that you would like to talk about because primarily the show's going to be his with his vision and his strategies, what he's planning on implementing, so we'll know for the next year, Dr. Bracy.
Sure. You know where the town bank is? It's on the
We have the presentation like we normally get on the
Is it?
That's what I say, send a list to Kathy, if that's one of the things you still want to see.
That's automatic.
Yeah, we don't have a sender, that's automatic.
Yeah, that's automatic.
That's when they unveil them.
Okay.
And I think Mr.
Nottingham?
Retreat.
Okay, everyone's good with that? All right. For the
For the retreat?
For the retreat, no, in the past, we haven't had a lawyer, because it's all presentations normally by staff or anything like that. I'm sorry, you're right, you wouldn't have to be there.
That's fine, just want to make sure.
The only reason you would have to be
It's my birthday.
Oh.
We're not going to mess with that.
Yeah. Unless the board decides to get someone else, the lawyer normally conducts this opening meeting for the election and other officers and then disappears.
True.
Okay.
No problem. I'll cut that down.
Okay, and, okay, item number 10, Dr. Bracy, review of the agenda for Thursday, May 21st, 2015.
Okay. All right, if you'll look at the agenda, we'll have the call to order by Mr. Bridgeford, the moment of silent prayer, pledge of allegiance by Hania S. Stallings, second grader, Westhaven Elementary School, and I'll make sure I have these names correct. Statement, Preston J. Krim, fifth grader at Westhaven. School board mission statement, Mr. Bridgeford. Attendance by electronic vote, Ms. Chambers. Item one, electronic vote, request for the approval of the agenda. Item two, discussion, the annual report for First College, spring 2015, by Dean Rosa Wells-Garris. Item three, presentation, recognition of schools with the highest attendance rate for April. Item number four, electronic vote, request for the approval of the date for the annual reorganizational meeting, Thursday, July 30, I think is what, the 31st?
2nd. Maybe July 2nd.
July 2nd, 2015, at 5:30, third floor conference room, and the annual summer retreat, that will be
I'll tell you.
Okay. We'll get them in there. Item five, electronic vote, request for the approval of the minutes. Special meeting held on Thursday, April 2nd. Special meeting held on Monday, April 13. Special meeting, public work session held on Thursday, April 16. The regular meeting held on Thursday, April 23, 2015. Item six, discussion, public comment on non-agenda items. Item seven, discussion, monthly report, curriculum instruction, and we'll talk with Dr. Anita Wintella to see if she will be sharing, that may give her a chance to do her introduction at that time, so we'll make that adjustment. Item eight, discussion, monthly report, human resources, Ms. Jessica Durin, acting senior supervisor. Item nine, electronic vote, request for the approval of the tenure list for the 2015-16 school year. school year. These are continuing contracts. Item 10, electronic vote, request for the approval of the employee transaction report for May 2015.
Mr. Bracy?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Hines mentioned earlier, I think she asked you the question about, will there be, will there be any changes by June 30th? And I think you answered yes. So, I just want to make sure when we approve the employee transaction report for May, are you going to, in other words, this is going to be done in June? I just want to make sure that the list we receive is not going to reflect some of your recommendations.
It won't be in the, it won't be in the May.
It won't be in the May, but it'll be, could be in the June.
It'll be, right. Yes, sir.
Right, thank you.
Dr. Bracy, did you still want to move the tenure report to June?
Yes, yes. The tenure report is due to the change in the...
It's June.
It's June now. So, that will be done next month.
Right.
Okay. We'll make that adjustment. Item 11, for discussion, monthly report, budgeting planning, Mr. Steele. Item 12, electronic vote, request for the approval of a purchasing contract. Item 13, electronic vote, request for the approval of the finance report for April 2015. Item 14, for electronic vote, request for the approval of the final school board operating budget for the 2015-16 school year. Item 15, superintendent's report. Item 16, for discussion, board members' comments and concerns. Item 17, adjournment.
Okay.
Question, will we get, for item 12, will we get that on track ahead of time?
Actually, it might be plural, but we wanted to put in a standing item for every school board meeting going into the end of the, to the year, so whatever is ready, we'll put those in.
Matter of fact, depending on what MWB does, let's say, we may be getting a list of them, a slew of them for approval.
All right.
Okay. All right, next item, board members' reports. Do we have any board member reports? No board member reports?
I have one.
Okay, you didn't put your hand?
I'm sorry, I had to, it had to come back around.
Okay.
I did want to say I saw what was in the currents on Sunday, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Agenda.
Yes, the agenda was in the currents, and I meant to call Kathy and say, I saw it, it was there, but I just wanted to say...
And it's free of charge.
Oh.
Nice. And that was my next question, so is this something that we can do on a continuing basis?
She's, it's ongoing. She's going to meet the schedule and, you know, that doesn't mean we're not going to have some changes to it, but, and like I told her, we'll see how free it's going to stay when they get the long ones. This is relatively short.
But thank you, I saw that, so thank you.
Okay, item number 13 for roll call. Okay.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yeah, I will.
At 5:30.
Okay. Request for approval of an expulsion discipline case number 2014-15/23, board's pleasure. Move for approval.
Second.
The moving properly second that we approve the expulsion discipline case for number 2014-15/23. No discussion, roll call Madam Clerk.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you. I got it. Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance? Oh. Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, item number 14 for roll call, vote, request for the approval of a long-term suspension discipline case number 2014-15/33, board's pleasure.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's moving properly second that we adopt the long-term suspension discipline case recommended by the superintendent. If there's no discussion, roll call Madam Clerk.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, I have two items. Board doc training, for those that have signed up, that's next week, please, what day is it?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
5:30.
5:30, roughly about 45 minutes to an hour. Now, I got to remember not to forget.
You are going to have a computer.